Seven.
The eight, seven o'clock. We will start on time the board of selectmen meeting for the I's of March, or Thursday, March fifteenth, twenty eighteen. Just realized, the I's of March is here.
I's, yeah, the I's of March.
And, uh, all three selectmen are present, the admin, uh, the town minister is present, and we do not have a town secretary, the minutes record secretary, and so lean, you are being charged with taking minutes for tonight. Uh, Leo, we are live, Leo Martella is taking, uh, to set up the video, he's taking video of the meeting. Okay, old business first, we have minutes, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the March eighth, twenty eighteen minutes as amended.
Second, any discussion, gentlemen? Do you have any discussion, all in favor?
You want to make the next one, Bob?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the, to approve the non-public minutes for March eighth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
And then, I don't, did we amend those?
I think.
I didn't see any.
Yes, they were, they were amended.
Okay, so I'm gonna say as amended.
So now you can.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have right wing this side. Now to make sure that you get, it goes into a black hole.
Think we can get home in time to watch Scandal?
Well, I want to, I want to keep it strict business tonight because we had a long week and the week's not over yet, so we want to just move the agenda. I'm gonna open up for public comment, if you have a public comment, please state your name for the record. I'll start with Leo, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Chief, uh, you're gonna be talking to us later during the town business section?
Yes, the only thing I, I tell you is, uh, that expensive repair I was gonna have done on the tourist is done, you're gonna get a, a bill for like sixty hundred dollars on it, so.
Okay, and as long as you, how many more years are you guaranteeing out of that?
I'd like to take it till the end of my career, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
We'll see how we make out.
Okay, very good, thank you. Gentlemen, you're on the agenda, so I'll bypass you for now, unless you have something else for public comment.
Yep.
Okay, um, I'm closing public comment, and I'm gonna open up to the agenda. Jeff, you're up as first on our agenda.
We are, oh, thank you. Um, I was hoping Jeff Crosby would be here on time.
He said he would be.
Okay, so we'll collaborate on waiting for Jeff to connect.
The current word, as I've been told by the board, it's ramble.
Ramble, okay, so we'll, we'll ramble, we had our first, um, team, construction team meeting for the school addition renovation project this afternoon.
Okay.
Um, and Jeff was there, Chief was there, and Tom Witten, and, and, uh, ten other folks. Um, and one of the topics of discussion is our construction manager, Balin Corporation, would like to start construction on March twenty-sixth, Monday. The road, however, is posted, a twelve-ton limit right now from Route thirteen, um, on a Robert Rogers Road. Um, the, uh, construction manager, we're here asking for a waiver for that posting, starting on the twenty-sixth of March. I did a little research into the state law, RS eighty-two thirty-one, colon, one ninety-one, which I'm sure Jeff is very familiar with. Um, you know, the highway agent is, you know, assigned the task of posting roadways and so forth, preventing reasonable damage, extraordinary municipal maintenance expense, et cetera. It's unlawful to drive on it unless you give written permission, provided in a expeditious manner from the selectman or highway agent in the town. So, you folks have the authority to provide written permission. Officials authorized to grant written permission may impose reasonable conditions, and may establish reasonable regulations for bonding and restoring highway, if you choose. And, uh, let's see, nobody's exempt from this, it says, provided, however, that any owner of land or a commercial enterprise served by such highway, who demonstrates that such limits would entail practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship, and who complies with all conditions and regulations concerning bonding and restoration shall be granted an exception unless the exemption, uh, would be detrimental to public safety. So there's, there's a process in the law for what we're asking for tonight. And I really want Jeff to comment on it because, uh, we first, obviously, went to Jeff and said, would you, and Jeff said, I can't. You know, otherwise, he's gotta let everybody, you know, he's gotta wait for anybody else to ask for it, and he's certainly reluctant to do so for a good reason. But I want him to be able to address the, you know, what's the risk to the community?
Would you want to defer, I could continue with immediate deferred for the?
Yeah, why don't we do that, let's wait for Jeff to come in and then we'll have that conversation.
Jeff, do you have the distance to that, to the school?
I could go walk it and tell you how much it is. It's not much, maybe five hundred feet. And so everything would come in off of Route thirteen. On the twenty-sixth, they would bring in an excavator, uh, and a dump truck, start excavating. That week, they would probably, they may need to bring in some stone if they find that the footing subgrade.
Yeah, okay, well, we can, we can continue.
Yeah, so we'll, if you guys have a lot of things, we can wait for him to come in, or.
So, um, so it's more than just bringing the equipment to the site one way?
There'll be loaded dump trucks and certainly concrete maybe by the end of that week, as they start forming footings. The idea is to get foundations in quickly, get them back built quickly, to make the site more secure.
Sometimes I've seen kind of exceptions for like bringing a piece one way, and then working on a site.
Yep.
But not to continue to travel after that.
Correct, correct, and from what our construction manager is telling us, um, they, we have a really tight schedule, as you know. He has very little float time in his schedule between when he needs to start and when he has to turn over the building on August twenty-fourth, because we start school that, that's a Friday, we start school on Monday, so.
And well, Jeff's coming in, how are you, how are you gonna flag, are you starting out the back, obviously?
Correct.
And how are you gonna flag that off in reference to the, the playground?
So we started back again. I told him that you're all in favor of this, and.
So this is the plan that was, and I only have one copy, I apologize.
That was brought to us today.
Can I take a copy of that?
You certainly can.
That way you can give.
I didn't have the ability to make color copies, so. So they're fencing off an area.
Yep.
Around the, where the construction will be, this will become contractor parking, trailers, tool storage. So this will be contractor area, and then we'll move all, school operations, parking, et cetera, will all be over this side, so there's a clear demarcation.
So, Mayor Chief, or anybody have any concerns in reference to the safety of the building, not being able to go all the way around it?
Yep, we talked about that at the meeting, um, keys will be given to our chiefs for the locks, so they'll be on the, the gates, so if they do need to get in, they'll be able to get in.
Okay.
But we talked about safety and safety of kids as well, means be grass.
Are they still gonna go outside and try and play in the area?
I think the playground will still be open.
Two feet of snow, right?
The ball field will be available for rec use, you know, off hours, you know, for softball practice and games and so forth. They're not fencing off that entire parking lot, so there'll still be parking there for people who want to use the ball field in the summer. So the, the, what I mentioned was, our contractor wants to start on March twenty-sixth, um, but the road is posted. The contractor wants to begin on the twenty-sixth to bring in his excavator, bring in a dump truck. But during that week, he may need to bring in loads of stone if he finds that the footing subgrade as he excavates is too wet to, to build footings, build formwork on, he may want to put in a layer of stone, so that would be trucking some stone, and then certainly concrete for footings before the end of that week. And then moving right into concrete for walls, and then bringing gravels in for backfill and subgrade.
Jeff, one question, when do you normally, on average, lift the, lift the, the?
Right around the first part of April.
April first?
Typically, I mean, it could go either way, um, as I talked, told Jeff, and the frost had pretty well come out of the ground up until the other day.
Now we're getting a little bit of cold.
Well, yeah, we're kinda getting the more, what we should have had three weeks ago, instead of seventy-degree weather, you know, but that's what it is. And the ground had dried up a lot because the snow was gone, and there is some snow now, but it's not a horrible thing. It's just, that's typically, when we try to do it, as I told Jeff, if anybody else wants to do anything, we hold a pretty tight line on it. I told him last year we had quite a go-around with the logging. It was a different situation, yes. We still seem to be standing by that for all the.
I think he had even talked about bonding the road, but we didn't even agree to that.
Yeah. Thing to do.
The process, yeah, within the town.
Yeah.
Of course, this is, this has a limited amount of distance to the highway.
Yeah, that was the other thing Jeff had talked about that, I mean, that the shorter distance, um, you know, a lot of it's, a lot of it's precedent, I think, honestly.
Right.
You know?
But this is, uh, incident where it involves the town itself, you know, trying, trying to meet a schedule, you're only a few days away, but for another question, and you, and you may or may not know the answer, if they had to get a bond, is that a minimal cost? Do you know?
The thing is. I imagine there is, yes, there's certain costs.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm wondering, only because it's not a lot of distance, would it be a minimal amount, or?
Yeah, is there, is there a minimum X number of dollars regardless of what the risk is, and then, yeah, I'm not sure.
You know, I, I, just trying to figure out which way.
Put another compromises throughout, there's not much difference, we're right in the timeframe where he'd probably be lifting it, bring just machinery to start the, and defer any concrete, and defer any stone and all that kind of stuff, but he can start with the minimal stuff, setting up fencing, getting stuff, some excavating done with the one-time equipment coming in, and holding off anything heavy, how does that sound?
What's his equipment?
But I guess he said, well, that doesn't work, because once you dig a hole, it fills with water.
The other thing is, for him to get this site ready to pour concrete, it's not a big deal.
He's gonna be fast.
It won't take him long, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming if he actually broke, if he, I don't know, when you say the twenty-sixth, are they gonna show up? Somebody's gonna start putting fence up, I mean, somebody's gonna have to push the saw, uh.
I think they're putting fence up next week.
Yeah, so see, they'd be, basically, they'd be ready to go.
Okay.
So I'm estimating if he showed up Monday morning, he probably would want to be thinking concrete Tuesday or Wednesday morning, the latest, you know, footings, right?
Yep.
So they, they, they wouldn't want to dig it and leave it.
Okay, just, just, just thinking out of the box?
Yeah, no.
Is that out of construction?
They don't have a lot of preparation work, I guess, it's not like they have to move a lot of stuff, topsoil and all this stuff, to get the site ready for excavation.
Jeff, um, taking out a lot, like Bob said, this is for the town.
Yeah.
And, um, the distance being so short, if it was for the town and it was going across the entire road, I'd have, I'd have a little bit more problem with it. But being for the town, and then, uh, maybe we could even look at limiting some of the trucking hours to when it's colder in the day. That would help a little bit.
That's a possibility, but typically, it doesn't work.
But bringing, usually for the contract.
Bringing the stone in.
And then they pour the end of the day.
Yeah, but I'd like this, this stone and all, like sand on it off, and that type of stuff, could be, could be.
Project manager indicated, and I don't blame him, it's, it's the way to do it, they move in the dirt, they would want to haul it out, but then he made reference that they could stockpile it.
Right.
I don't know how much persuasion he has with that.
So the, the soil that's out there is a hard pan, it's a really dense material, it's really not good for backfill or for use underneath the slabs. So, everything that they dig for excavating, for the foundation, and their plan, I'm hauling away, bringing back in some gravel, street draining material. So, they could stockpile that and not haul that away that week, but they still may have to bring in some stone, and would certainly want to bring in concrete.
See, that's, that's the type of thinking I think would make best sense, to limit some of the trucking on the road.
But it's gonna be substantial, I mean, it's, you know, it's not like a project where they had the concrete down and they want a load of lumber so they can get to the next. I mean, it's, it's kinda, you know, it's pretty hard to limit that to just the morning, yeah, bringing a piece of equipment, and yet they could bring that in the morning, but the rest of it, once they get going, they kinda, they got guys, I don't know what, what type of contractor this is, but.
But if they're ready to pour in the afternoon, they could actually do that first thing in the morning.
They could, I mean, it's system compromise, yeah.
They've gotta watch weather, too, so.
The other, the other issue is, we talked about a bond, and there's probably ninety-nine percent chance that they will not do any damage to that road that we will see. But the damage is structurally underneath, it compromises the more and more heavy trucks drive over. I mean, you know, there's cracks in the asphalt, there's potholes in it, you know, it's hard to say, well, did your truck do that, or did the town truck do it when they plowed that last, or more, or the oil truck, when they delivered it? So that's kind of a hard thing to, you know, a bond, I mean, it, it keeps everybody honest, I think, it is, it's a good idea, but to implement that for the additional cost of what we really get out of it.
And I look at the, at the bond as being a guarantee that the person who damages the road will fix the road, well, it's really the town taxpayers, so.
Yeah, we're gonna be bonding our own road.
Exactly.
Because we're gonna pay for it on one end or the other, they're gonna send the bill right back to us.
Even the concept would be setting the precedent, because a lumber company could come in and say, like they did last year to us, we're gonna bond the road. And, yeah, then we end up arguing, well, as it was, previous damage, or was it damage, but that they caused?
Well, we had an issue already this year, we hadn't posted the roads at that point, but it was on the borderline with a dirt road with some concrete trucks. To the letter of the law, there was no sign up yet, but they didn't use good judgment.
Uh-huh.
And that doesn't mean every concrete company's gonna have bad judgment, but judgment's a big issue with some of these people, and I mean, this.
Well, and that's why I was speaking to the time of the day, keeping some of those materials on site till the road band is pulled off, to limit that going by, because I'm sure as soon as we do allow that, you know, we're gonna hear some barking from some neighbors or whatnot.
Yeah.
So sure, to limit that as best we can, and then have them, even if they worked with Jeff daily on, you know, going in and out of that on a timely basis in the morning or whatever, before noon.
What, what is your bottom-line opinion?
What's my bottom-line opinion? I really have a hard time wrapping my head around the, the fundamental issue is, it's already for the town to do it, but the guy who wants to do something else can't do it, because I've been telling him, no, you can't do, you can't pour your concrete till you lift the road up. This is unusual, because this is the only thing we got going close, the rest of the stuff is down roads, like Dave said, a, a great distance.
And, and I, I guess I would say, it's the town taking the risk of damaging town properties, not like private individuals doing that. And we have the unique situation of a, of a huge construction project, and we have to hit a deadline, we can't postpone starting school a week, you know, if they're not ready, so.
You know, a week or two means a lot on this project.
We don't know what weather's gonna do.
This is the first phase of it, yeah, they can't do.
If you don't get started on this, you may.
Well, they can't do their inside work, obviously, the school's in, so this gives them a jump on, yeah, so. I, I just, you know, I'm kinda torn, really, to be honest with you, I, I just, it's, you know.
That's why they get paid the big bucks.
Well, I'm not trying to throw it all in their lap, I told you what my answer would be if it was just, I told you that right off out of the gate, it would be, no. And, but we'll come talk to the selectmen, and maybe we can work out a compromise or something.
But I do agree with Jeff, that it is our, it is our own roads, so if they are damaged, I mean, we, we damaged our own roads, which are the roads that we fix within the town, so.
In the parking area down there, we're gonna redo that anyway, they're not gonna hurt that, I mean, they may break through it totally, it's in pretty sad shape, but so be it.
Yeah, that's the second half of our conversation, yeah, that's pretty horrible.
That was pretty popularly, anyway.
Oh, we've, we've torn it up even worse this winter with the conditions we've had, yes.
I guess it, to the matter of scheduling things for, I mean, I've done jobs too where they'd come in in the morning to do the concrete, because as it got later in the day.
Yeah.
Either, it was either that, or they used the huff to push the concrete truck back to where it had to pour and pull it out, because things get soft, they change real quick. So if they could schedule when they're using the heavy stuff, I don't think I'd have a problem with it, in other words, if they poured concrete first thing in the morning, if they come in first thing in the morning with the equipment, because I don't know what piece, what size piece of equipment they're gonna use.
No idea.
But it could be substantial, you know, it could have an impact.
It would be over the twelve-ton limit for sure with the equipment, whatever carrier they used.
Yeah, just the equipment's gonna be forty or fifty thousand pounds, or it's possible, I don't know.
So, you know, I think if, if we could be kind of assured that they would use that type of schedule, you know, is, because I don't know, I mean, I don't like to pull the rug out from under a department head.
No, and I, and I want to.
To get caught up with, to get going in the direction and moving, I mean, that's how I would have to look at it.
And we do give people permission to do it, it's not like we, we hold a tight line and say, nobody can do anything.
Because you've allowed a single lumber load to go in or that, early in the morning, my company's got permission to bring, go into many towns, early in the morning, before eleven o'clock, bring your big load in. You know, then we use smaller trucks to finish the job off.
Yeah.
So, we find most towns work with us, as long as we do it by eleven or noon.
In fact, remember the logging company, Jeff, last year, when we asked the question about doing, yeah, I think Dave, you posed a question, if they do it early in the morning?
Yeah.
And it was gonna be all day long?
But he had too many loads, so he would.
Right, it was gonna be all day long, so.
He said one or two loads wasn't gonna help him, his business had to run all day.
We put, we basically, me, no, these guys were backing my decision, twelve people had to get laid off supposedly, because they couldn't come in more.
Yeah.
That was the story we got.
Okay. Well, it was a big outfit, it was a big outfit, and when he was out and running, they weren't.
They'd have to get laid off because they couldn't dig this hole.
No, that, that's not gonna happen, it's really.
It's gonna mess up your schedule basically.
We'll roll on the dice, if we get bad weather this, this summer and this spring, we're, we're screwed, so.
Well, I think we're almost to a consensus here, um, storing the material on site when they can.
Yep.
Limiting, uh, heavy loads to morning.
Okay.
Close coordination with the road agents, is have to give them the time, when it end, cutoff times, when, I mean, if it's like fifty degrees at ten o'clock, we, that may not be a good day.
And if the road agent feels that we got a warm week next week, and things have really dried out, and wants to.
He can lift it at his, that's his target.
The forecast I saw doesn't allude to that? Sounds like they're gonna go backwards this weekend, if I don't know.
I was just gonna say, I guarantee us, there's gonna be no storm that week.
You're gonna need a frost blanket.
I mean, the other thing, it's, it's significant, but it's not a huge concrete bore either.
No, it's not.
You know, I mean, there's.
Sixties, hundred and thirty, and another thirty.
Hundred and fifty feet of linear feet of wall, four feet deep in a footing, or five feet in a footing.
But Jeff, as an department head, by you holding a hard line too, you can say, well, that was an exempt from the select office, you know, at the time.
I mean, they, they can really limit the amount of material that comes on and off the site.
Okay.
And they can, instead of putting ten or eleven yards on the concrete, try to lighten them up a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I realize they have to make more trips.
More trips, yeah.
And that's, that's a catch-22, because it's like, you got more trips?
Pay more for the concrete.
Yeah, no, but I think, I think they'll get the same price, I don't think they're gonna get any better deal, or they unfold over, or, or eight yards, but even, but then I said, they bring more trucks, instead of five trucks, they do six. So it's more trips, so we could have that argument all day, but if they're just conscious of that stuff, that's all.
Okay.
Just to be very conscious, and I'll keep my eye on it, but.
So I, I think we need an action from the board.
So I'll make a motion that we allow the, uh, school board to start their construction project, um, using the road agent as a determining factor of balance to watch over the, the traffic going on the road.
Fair enough, and you're saying that right now technically, after, or on or after the twenty-sixth is when they want to start bringing some sort of equipment.
Right, and that way, by giving it back to the road agent, he can control and watch that, and not set any specific times, they can work with Jeff, because some of them, days next week will be cold enough, they, or, on the twenty-sixth, they could work the entire day, they're gonna be in the, you know, twenties, so, okay.
Sounds up.
So I would second your motion, just.
We're, we're great with that, thank you.
Any further discussion?
As long as, as long as they try to meet those conditions.
Understood.
You know, the, uh.
But not try, meet.
Meet.
Yeah, exactly, meet it, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, so you have the responsibility?
Yeah, we'll work it out.
Okay, and, uh, just to make sure that your project manager has a cell phone.
They've had a conversation today, and we'll be having more, so.
He's not available by email, he's mostly available by cell phone.
I figured that out myself.
He's email, yeah, I warned him.
I checked, I saw that plan today.
It's like trying to reach me on a cell phone, my cell phone lives in the car, turn it on. So the second half of our conversation, we came to you back, I forget how many months ago, to talk about that parking lot, and, um, as Jeff will tell you, it's, it's really gone to pieces this winter, it really needs to be rebuilt. What we have in our project, um, in the, in the.
Road.
Yeah, what the contractor owns is rebuilding the fire road from here over to here, including adding pavement to gain three spaces and three spaces, so, we own that pavement. Jeff, though, has got, you know, they got nice, with paving for the town, can get good prices for paving, um, wants to, I think, pull out the, uh, two feet of material in there.
Or a portion, we're kind of decided, we had to do a little test, and play it by, under the existing parking.
Put some good gravel in there, put compact gravel before paving.
Will you be able to handle that under your current budget?
He's gonna strap it, uh, there's no doubt about it. As we had talked about, we're trying to figure how to divide some of this stuff, and I had indicated to Jeff that I thought he ought to bid whatever his section, or not his, I'm calling it.
The school's section.
School part, yep. Have those guys bid, whatever number they have, and perhaps we could back the paving part of it out. Because, because we could pave it all at the same time.
And you're gonna buy it by the ton, which would be much better.
And we know, and we know we can get a, a fair, really better price on paving, right?
So you're not prepared to substrate in the.
But the preparing of the.
The road band.
Yeah, the new fire road.
You can do that.
They could repair all, they said they were gonna do.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna need to put those gravels in, open up that fire road soon anyways, even though we may pave later in the year. So we can take care of the gravel, the town takes care of paving, that's great, it actually reduces our budget, so there's something that we can do to help the town budget, and we've got eighteen thousand.
Yeah, they carried a number of eighteen thousand for paving.
You should do the subgrade on the whole parking lot then.
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll see when you fit that in. I'll ask for.
Looking at this price, I don't think it would happen.
You know, it's dirt. Well, I mean, it's just, if they need forty-eight thousand for site work, and then another eighteen for paving, it would cost quite a bit for.
Any of the material that they're digging up, be usable?
Not really.
I just started.
I mean, it's.
Clay-based.
We actually, as the town, when they put that addition on, we bumped the fire road over a little, excavated it down like a foot or something, put some gravel in it, repaved it.
Okay.
The fire road is really pretty much junk from.
All the way down to the parking lot.
Yeah, from the lower parking lot all the way up, past the school onto that parking lot.
Okay, and that's what's, that's your.
Well, no. We, we picked it up right here at this walkway.
Right.
And, and that's where we started to bend it around the addition, so we, that's what we own in the, in the project right now.
This is the part you're talking about?
Yeah, we didn't go all the way. So we gotta, we really should, I don't know, it doesn't need a lot of work, but we gotta address that to, and it should all be done at the same time.
And you did the lower parking lot already.
That was never done, we, I haven't done it since we've been over here.
The gymnasium parking lot?
Nope, that was built in nineteen eighty-nine, that's all that's been done to it.
It wasn't repaved?
Nope. Sound a pretty good. We crack sealed it, I put a drainage line across it, the access road in there, we redid that and widened it up, because it was quite narrow.
Yeah, it was.
Two cars couldn't pass.
Maybe that's what I was saying.
That's probably what we think.
You did that a few years back?
Oh, yeah, quite a few now, but you're right, we did do, we addressed that. The upper parking lot, I think, when Jan Van de Voet was road agent, they did some work up there, I don't know exactly. I think it got added on to, because again, it was all a pretty small area years ago, there was very small pit, so they increased parking and did that. Since I've been on board, we, the access road we did, and then over by the police station, we did some work there, and we stopped right at the end of the police, at the building headquarters, because we knew that pavement down, and that's, that's the same scenario when the fire station, not the fire station, the police station was added on, you know, a little more got paved, when the school did their project, a little more got blocks out paved, so it's like all kinds of different materials there, so that's why I'm a little like, I don't know what we're gonna dig out.
I just don't want you, if you take on too much, you're gonna all extend, you'll, you'll kill your budget.
Yes, exactly, so that's why I'd like them to do as much as they committed to do.
Yep.
And, yeah, so what happens with the eighteen thousand dollars, how does that?
Yeah, how can we help the town? How can we help the town with that eighteen thousand dollars, what can we do? Does the rest of the fire road need more gravel in there, does it need to be dug up and re?
Yes, it needs to be, the asphalt there needs to be removed, and probably some more gravel added, I don't know the linear footage.
Well, let me look at that.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe we could do a, they could, I'm just speaking out loud now, they could take off from that lower parking lot, and stop at the, the upper ground at the upper parking lot.
For that equal money or?
Yeah.
What do you think?
We'll do all the gravels, extra, gravels, town comes in and paves, plus the town does the gravels on the west parking lot and paves. Yeah, let's take that to.
Because, except for, you're gonna do the three spaces, the gravel, three new spaces, right?
You bet, yep.
Well, so the three new spaces and the, the road.
We can, it may be easier to do it with the towns in there working, but.
For our discussion, I don't know if it's on camera or anything else, negotiation purposes, I mean, a trade-off, we could say, all right, we'll take care of the additional parking spaces on the existing parking lot, because we're gonna tear the parking lot up anyway.
Yeah, you'll be in there with the.
I mean, well, you know what I mean, that's not that big a deal, if they, if we can get them to take care.
The road.
From the generator basically down to the, yeah, and that gets kind of wide down.
For negotiation, trying to go in the other way.
But even though we're.
Well, you don't know what that might cost.
Even though we're two different entities, that's coming out of the same pocket for everybody else.
It makes sense to collaborate and find the cheapest way to get.
Given the year we're having, I would just assume not lose that eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay.
If we could get it back in kind work, that's gonna benefit the whole project, I'd be happy, or a check for eighteen thousand dollars, you know? But that's hard, that's hard to do, yeah, then, then we're charging the school, and the school's paying, you know what I'm saying?
I would just recommend a memorandum of understanding of who's responsible for what.
Once we figure it out, we'll put it down in writing, because it'll be a change order on our side for our contract.
Just so we're clear, I mean, it's, we're talking verbally, it's on tape, but still memorandum of understanding, paper-wise, would be a good, great.
Yeah, we would talk, we've talked about it a little bit already and if we could come talk to you about it.
It would make sense to pave that road from the edge of the parking, the lower parking lot, all the way around.
For sure, yep.
Instead of having it like the parking lot, broken up into chunks.
That's what the problem is now.
Exactly. I don't think we're in disagreement. I think, I would recommend they go, you go forward, negotiate some more, come up with an agreement and we can codify it.
Do we need crappy fill anywhere? You know, the stuff we're gonna dig out of there? We, do we wanna, you know, backfill off the lower parking lot to get ready for more?
Well, it was great to do that, but there's a whole, trees would have to be cut, stumps would have to be removed, topsoil would have to be moved. I looked at that already.
Great material.
I looked at that already. I went down there before we had this couple, last couple snowstorms, thinking about my parking lot, what's going on. And it's just, it would be a good idea, but it would be quite, we, another whole effort of work.
Do we have someplace close they could haul that, Jeff?
Not really.
It's all right. We, we have it in our budget to have it.
I mean, there's random people around town that are always looking for fill, but, you know.
I have one public question, if I don't mind saying, I'm gonna open up that one public question. Remember Jermaine with us?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, that's, you know, the cemetery trustees have been talking to you about working back there. Is there some place that you, yeah, is there someplace you could, they could use back?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, but, you know, then again, it's a.
Well, I think, I think time's of the essence because twenty-sixth is.
I was gonna say access to get it in there with large trucks and heavy trucks.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. Maybe off the side or some, I don't know.
Yeah, and but, yeah, I don't know.
Cuz like two weeks ago it was dry, right now it's not that way. But they haul that material now. They need a dry spot to get it done.
To haul it over there, they wouldn't be able to do it probably until once. What our plan is, and that's part of the reason, I just assumed have them wait to do those parking spaces. We can excavate that area out. We'll reclaim all the asphalt that's on there in place and remove that with whatever gravel we have. And we'll stockpile at the end in that new parking area, but that'll be cut, if you fall, falling, it's gonna be cut to the subgrade we need. And then bring some of it back and add more gravel to achieve the grades we need.
So you're reciting.
So we're gonna try to reuse on-site as much as we can, cuz it just costs us money to haul the asphalt away. But there probably will be some sub-material that's to haul away. They have to haul pretty much all the stuff they.
So Jeff, being whereas you gotta keep a couple of weeks to keep that site, that, that material on site.
Yep.
Maybe we'll do some thought around town. If we think of some good ideas, we'll, we'll approach you guys.
Okay. Well, the, the other thing is, it's, it's, you know, just keep in mind, everybody always says they want some fill, but we try to accommodate them when we're in the neighborhood. But, you know, they're not, these guys aren't gonna wanna back in around people's yards and upload to Joe's house and over my house and over Allison's.
You're already trying to stricken travel as his.
Exactly.
He means that for the road.
Oh, he means for the road, yeah, yeah.
Cuz they're gonna stockpile it for nine weeks. So we have maybe a few weeks to think about.
Yeah.
If the town could use it anywhere.
Yeah, but at the top of my head, no. And we, a lot of that stuff we haul to our pit. We had a great place to get rid of it up here. But that gal doesn't seem to really want to, on Noel's house, doesn't seem to wanna have talk to her a couple of times. And she's, doesn't know what she's, wants to do with her property since she's in that.
It's, you know, it's clean fill. It's nice, you know, but it's just, it's very clay, you know, not really well-drained material.
Okay. Well, I don't think we need a motion on this. I'll see you come back with a memorandum of agreement.
Yeah, well, Jeff is.
Right now, I think you have a consensus that we're generally in favor of it, of saving town money.
Do you need experts too?
No. Well, we'll come up with something. I'll, you give me the word, we'll meet out there with him.
Cuz it's gonna be tied into your change order too, so it's, it's all tied together.
Yeah, and that's the only way I can see making sense out of it.
I agree. I agree.
I, I don't think you have any disagreement from the.
That is gonna be easier for the, their excavation company and contractor because it's definite lines, you know, right now they're, they're kinda doing the middle.
Okay.
It'd be light to get a little bit more than the school board.
Do what we can.
That was just a joke for the video.
That's all right, Dave. Just add his bond and you can get back. Give that thousand dollars back over eleven years.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
I have just a question.
Yes.
The bond application and inspections by the town.
Yep, Mike came to our meeting today.
I asked him to go, yeah.
And we had that conversation about what he's looking for for inspections and what we're doing for inspections. I think he's all set there.
Okay, but my question for you is, do you need us to be involved with those inspections? Or do you have someone, aren't of your construction crew that are qualified and will be?
So our design team will be doing, we don't call them inspections, we call them construction observations, but they'll be out there periodically.
Okay.
And we left it up to Mike. If he wants to come out at certain intervals to look at certain things, he's welcome to come out, just notify them. We've sort of left it.
All right, cuz we don't have a lot of hours budgeted for him and I don't want him to be consumed with doing all those inspections, but if they're, if needed, then the board needs to know that we're gonna go over on his.
Big projects, construction projects, that the planning board attends, usually they'll have, the companies will provide their own, inspecting via their own engineer.
Right.
And all they're required to do is provide a courtesy copy of what they, of their findings.
Yep, and we talk about that. We file all of our inspection reports with Mike, so.
Right.
So I'm gonna be doing all the structural inspections out there looking at it.
Reports, reports are really what I would, our mandatory. Invite Mike out, as I said, would be, if you have your own site engineer inspected, we don't require.
Yeah, and, and then it, it, we like to try to keep our lot files complete and then that becomes a, a record that we can turn back, you know, return to for any questions that things, if we have problems.
So that, that standard procedure for us is to copy the building department with any reports that the design team.
And they've already been in today to meet with him.
About permits and so.
With the plans and whatnot, so, okay. And then the other thing was, you want me to wait on this? Cuz this is really assessing information for the bond. I received that email.
So i- if there's questions about it, work through Dwayne Ford.
Yeah, but you had replied, don't do anything with it, but what I wanna do is get the data and give it back to you. You can email.
Yeah, so my, my, there's some timing going on here. We won't find out until March nineteenth, next Monday, what we're getting for our state funding for the grant. And depending upon what we get, we may adjust the amount on our application for the bond. So that's why I told Dwayne, make sure you don't submit the bond application till after we, we know. So that was the timing issue.
Okay, so this, my part's okay to complete?
I think it is, yeah.
It's just getting the information to Dwayne and then you guys will have it in your court.
Yeah.
Cuz I don't, I'm busy, so if he does something off my desk, then I'll do it and get it done, so, okay. That's fine.
Jeff, yeah.
I'm just curious, does the school get relief on the building permit fee?
Yes, yes.
It's a no comment.
Good, I was hoping, I wasn't sure.
No, don't be silly.
Just, just, well, I didn't, you know. Just for the record, any, we found that, that there were construction projects going on for the town without any safety inspections. That's what that really is, that's the inspection.
No, but I didn't know.
And so we, we asked all departments if they're doing anything in construction, like electrical or anything like that, would they have a zero-cost permit to basically to do the work and we can inspect it?
I assumed it was.
Yes, no, it's.
Especially if Mike doesn't have to be too involved.
No, in fact, it shouldn't have to be involved with their own site engineer, similar to some of the other projects in town, commercial types of projects.
Sounds good.
Jeff, the only thing before you leave, I'm gonna be taking over the, looking at the town hall.
Okay.
Roof system up there.
Yep.
And when you get a little break, I know you're trying to take a breather a few days, maybe a week or so.
Call me anytime.
Okay, I'll give you a call. I just wanna review some ideas I have up there and.
You bet.
Get your thoughts on it.
Yeah, no problem, anytime.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, for coming in.
No problem. And Jeff, thanks for the information earlier on, another issue.
Yeah, oh, that's good.
Thanks. That was great, great information you provided.
He's scared he wears a vault group dress.
Okay, Tom, this, I wanna continue to go through the mad walks. But before I do that, I'm gonna give, as your, chief, is yours non-public or gonna be public?
Non-public.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Just an FYI, we had several invoices come in that were after the cutoffs we did. This one came in from last year, came in this month for Feb, and I think it's, the cutoff was in February. It's gonna be charged to the department this year, cuz our books are closed.
That's correct.
We had requested that too, so.
It's not a large amount, but when he submitted the invoice, we noticed it was from prior year.
Yeah, it is, okay, yeah. So that's, and I have another item here. This is Margaret Watkins. We have some individuals that she liked to nominate. For the, continue the nominations for the town hall restoration committee. Bob, are you aware, your name was on there as far as the, what's the story with that? She's pushing it early, but we can approve them tonight if we.
Cuz they only get appointed for the year that they want, so they all have to come up for reappointment this year.
I, I.
Clem Madler's just here.
Okay, I can, I want to take a motion to, to accept all these and we can, and make a motion and pass on the London prepared papers.
Yeah, that way they would, she can get the stuff ready for us next time. But I would second the motion, so that the.
Do you wanna mention those names?
Yes, for the record. Do you wanna read mine, David?
Yep, the names for the record, Beth Bucher, Sue Bracy, I think it's Ended Larson, Clem Magda.
You can get it, you can get it.
Kurt McDermott, Margaret Watkins, Peter Weeks, Shelley Westenberg, and also welcome Bob Martell's continued participation.
I guess her name's still there.
And that's, that's coming through the chairman, that's coming directly from the chair, it should be.
So I have a second to this motion.
All in favor of accepting those individuals for the town restoration committee?
Aye.
Okay.
They're still gonna come to us with a few more signatures.
Right, but we can get the paperwork started. All right, I have another thing from David Allen. This is the training. He's gonna have ethics training. And they're gonna do it on the second Tuesday of April tenth. He's asking for it to be distributed to the various department heads. I think Lean's already on top of that.
April twelfth?
Yes.
Make a note on mine, I'll send it my.
Are you gonna make it this year?
I'm trying to.
Okay. How would you become ethical, my friend?
I've already done.
Oh, okay. Ethical?
It was, it was six years ago or so.
And I'm, I'm only, I'm only kidding for the.
I've changed my thought process and.
That's nice.
Working with you.
I hopefully it's more ethical.
That's seven thirty, by the way, cuz I confirmed it in another email.
Seven thirty PM?
Yeah.
So again, for the record, it's a Tuesday, April tenth, seven thirty PM.
I'll be sending out the most of the departments.
And I, after participating last year, they put on a reasonably good, I think it's a, it's an interactive presentation, so we could ask questions and participate. Okay, I have Chief's inbox. Results, I'm gonna call Linda down in a moment. Dave, this was in the inbox. Did you wanna talk to that? Lean prepared another, this is about Chief's officer position and I think they had some numbers that I didn't need to use.
You had asked if, if I had anything in the spreadsheet, and he's pretty, I think the numbers are getting closer. Based on yours and my conversation, Dave, I just did a spreadsheet. That's the support stuff.
Yeah, what we were looking at is just the support documentation for the total amount it would cost for the full-time police officer for the town.
For what? For a full year?
For a full year.
Okay, that being, I think we're good there.
Yeah.
Okay, Chief, could I ask you a favor?
Sure.
Could you get Linda for me?
Of course.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That, that's the way she's gonna talk. That's that. That's Chief's.
This one here's Chief's.
Yeah, okay. And that's, sure. And then we'll come back to, okay, there was also, a, a, a thing is appointment of chairman to the board. This is for the cycle. Do you wanna do that now or you wanna do that next week?
Okay, well, we can do it now if you want.
Okay, the, the secondary thing is gonna be, we're gonna talk about next week. Linda will come to us prepared with the different committees, the segment representatives committees. Linda's got a good sheet, she's working on that here.
I would make a motion with reappoint Mike, cuz he's here again. I mean, it's working pretty good. He can do the rambling, we can do the listening and ask him.
Bob, did you, if, if you don't run again, this would be your last year, did you wanna be at like an honorary chair?
No, I, I think, I think, you know, I think it's fine.
Cuz that's chair, you could assign him as co-chair to still sit here in the middle and do his thing, you know?
No, that's, I don't have a problem with, with Mike.
I just wanted to make sure you didn't wanna be honorary chair.
Because I think, I think the tradition is that the most senior member is the chair.
And I understand that, and but I think this is working well the way it's working, and there's no sense changing it, so.
I was just gonna state to you, you know, you still can be chair and you could still elect somebody to, you know, run the center of the meeting.
No, no, I'd be satisfied with having him as chair.
Okay, well, I'll second that then.
I guess I'm upvoted.
So you get a second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
As I said, I'm upvoted. I abstained. All right, continuing on, I think, all right, Linda, you gonna give us an election update? We do have the copies of the election results.
Oh, good, I brought a copy just in case.
Okay.
In case you have questions.
And I'll give you the floor.
Yes, I have notified all of the win, well, almost all of the winners, that they do need to come in and be sworn in within six days of notification. There's a statute that dictates that. You and I need to do some swearing in today. We did some swearing in, so we need to sign these forms. I've already sworn in three other people, so.
Okay, excellent.
So we're well on a roll with all of that. There was a question on one of the, I held off on one of the write-in winners. It was an empty slot, and there was a winner who was a write-in, and I, I held off, there was a question prior, prior year regarding this. And it appears that he's not eligible. I contacted Secretary of State's office. They referred me to the Attorney General's office. I have a copy of the email here.
I provided it to him.
You did, okay. And the AG's office indicated that it should be sent to the town attorney to pursue. So that's where we are with that one.
And to give you a follow-up, the town attorney's been notified.
Okay.
She'll work on it first coming morning and she'll give us an opinion by tomorrow.
Perfect, and then we'll know where to go from there.
Okay, that's referencing that. And I just wanna say thank you, Linda, for allowing me to give you some input. Because I know it was, we had a, an interesting time last year and we just wanna do what's right.
Exactly.
And so I appreciate you allowing me to give you some input.
Yes.
What I shared with the gentleman, I shared her with the legal opinion basically provided last year by our attorney as a basis. And I think the purpose of contacting our attorney is not to repeat history, but just to reaffirm what she gave us last year and that's all.
And to see if there have been any changes, you know, to get an update.
Okay. Anything else, Linda?
That is all my general action related.
Just for the record, Linda's gonna go non-public this evening to provide us a recommendation for higher reaction tonight. And I think it's at this point, we, we can go non-public immediately. I kinda like backed us together, so they can, she'd be the last one on the agenda. I do wanna open up for public comment before I close the board and then before we go non-public.
Okay, good.
All right, so, public comment, Leo, you're the only one.
Just congratulations to you.
Thank you. I would continue to try to do my job.
Yeah, I believe you will.
Chief, anything? Okay, good, thank you. Okay, Linda, if you just stand by, I'd like to make a motion.
Did you ask David to add a comment?
Well, he was just doing public.
I'm gonna bring it back to the board now.
Okay, good.
Okay, as I said, I'm gonna bring it back to the board.
Thanks for luck, not let him forget that, Bob.
No, but he said I was gonna make a motion, that's all.
I was gonna hold up a motion, but right back to the chief. David, so you're on the, on the.
I know we had talked a few weeks back and I think Lean might have to answer this. Have we heard anything back on installing that library door from that contract?
I was sending him regular emails and I will, between Mary and. Right, I did ask him to communicate directly with Mary, but she usually keeps an open conversation.
I didn't see it replaced. Wouldn't drive by quick, but maybe.
I don't believe it has because she would have done it, so I'll follow up with that.
Yeah, I think if we follow up, I'd like to get it done before they get busy in the.
Well, he was gonna come in the Friday it rained, and we had that heavy rain, and, and he didn't. And then the following week, we had a snowstorm. I don't know if that's.
And I hadn't stopped snowing since. I'd just like to follow up, just to make sure he knows.
Maybe if he comes, I'll send you.
But if, if you call, just, I wanna say for the record, last, last week, people were inquiring about the weather and I kinda like alerted the town moderator to be prepared for a snowstorm. And I was like laughed at in the middle of meetings saying there's gonna be no snow and it's just gonna be dusting. The thing is, I, I would recommend when I suggest snow, people listening.
As clear, you gotta swallow your pride.
Okay.
Gotta be a little humble.
Yeah. But the thing is, I just want bragging rights that I was correct.
He's got no humility.
Okay.
So that's all I have for this week.
Bob, do you have anything for the group?
Actually, no.
Lean, any quick things before we go into non-public?
Nope, I have nothing.
Okay. Okay, I can make a motion that we go non-public for RSA ninety-one dash alpha colon three, Roman number two, paragraph B. And any discussion?